Imitating the size of the hesitant Guam is back in session. We ended up our discussion on Bill 162-36 COR. Senator Blas had posed a point of inquiry to the sponsor. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yeah, I believe during the recess, the technical issue was addressed and I think it was hopefully addressed sufficiently. The intent was never to repeal. The way it's written is that it was taken out of the bill but not taken out of statute.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I appreciate the response from the author of the bill. However, as I stated, unfortunately, they pulled the bill from the file already. The bill that was accepted as amended on the floor, obviously, that was not accepted. That was the bill that we were referencing to. I was making reference to. The bill as substituted now has this language that's in here that wasn't in the amended bill. So therefore, it's very technical and it's very, very easy to read that this is an attempt to strike or delete this. My suggestion, Madam Speaker, is for the sake of being very clear about this thing is present a new bill and don't even include that language. Why are we including it when it wasn't even accepted, it wasn't even in the amended bill? I can understand that it was in the original bill, but the amended bill that was put on the floor, as amended by the committee, did not have that language.
Senator Blas, there is no amended bill put on the floor except for the amended by the committee and substituted on the floor. That's the only bill that has been accepted on the floor today.
I appreciate that, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, earlier today, in the file...
But anyways, if I may explain, this bill, as we have before us, shows the changes to the original bill.
No, ma'am, it does not. The bill that was supposed to be accepted on the floor was the bill as amended by the committee.
There is no other bill. This is the only bill that has been accepted on the floor. It's been substituted on the floor. This is the only one. So there's no other bill except the original bill and this bill. And so anyways, on the bill...
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the bill... Creating a bill? No. I'm reminding those, I'm just stating for the record which bill we are debating. It is the bill as amended by the committee on environment, revenue and taxation, labor, procurement, statistics, research and planning, and substituted on the floor. It is the only substitute bill in the drive. It is the one that we have been working with since this morning. Are there any other points of inquiry regarding the version of the bill? This was supposed to be cleared up during recess by the clerks, legal reviewed. And if not, if no further inquiries on the version of the bill, we're on the bill. Senator Blas, on the bill, or anyone else on the bill? On the bill. Senator Son Augustin, we're going back to you after...
No, this is just point of information, Speaker.
Okay, sure.
I understand what you've been discussing with my colleague, but we need to understand the original bill, the amended bill, and then what was substituted. When you add a section in law and you strike it in the bill, it becomes a strike on the current law. It doesn't do anything else different. And legal can maybe interpret it, but once it was put in, it becomes an issue of concern of all of us because everything else we're discussing was okay. I was in support of the bill, but when you strike something from the law and you add it to a bill that was never discussed, then it becomes an issue. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
All right, is there any further discussion on the bill? Any further discussion on the bill? Senator Nelson, are you raising your hand? Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Thank you. I rise with the same concern as the previous speaker. You know, it was said that simple amendments were made by legal when the substitute bill was added into the, for the debate, but it is clearly, there's a difference because in the Section 2 of the original bill, it covers Section 49107 foxtrot. And then on this new bill that was substituted by the committee, it says, "As amended by the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement and Statistics, Research and Planning, and substituted on the floor." So this bill that we are viewing, it's significantly different from the original bill, and it doesn't look like simple amendments were made. And so, you know, Madam Speaker, I would, if we take a little more time to meticulously go over this bill, there is a distinct difference of what was placed here, and there's no simple amendments. This is addressing subsection 46116 of Chapter 46, Title 10 GCA, which is crossed out. And so I cannot support this new substituted on the floor bill that was allowed for the debate this morning.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the bill? Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I did want to ask the author a question if she would yield because I did notice that the authorization's being given to the administrator of Guam EPA to determine the use of the funds and then after the fact, on a quarterly basis, report back to the board. I wanted to inquire, what is the collective amounts kept in the accounts and perhaps whether or not the board should simply authorize the budget as they should for Guam EPA? I assume the board meets on a regular basis so that there is some type of public reporting and engagement with regards to how these funds are spent, which shouldn't be different from any other government entity that's governed by a policymaking board that sits above the director or the administrator or the president or whatever the respective title is of that government agency. So I wanted to ask if the sponsor of the bill would yield to that question.
Would the sponsor yield to the question by the Senator?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Thank you for that question. And I know this was brought up during the public hearing about having the budget approved by the board prior to the use of the funds. And I am supportive of accountability and transparency, but the thought that, one of the things that I've noticed about in the history of Guam EPA is that lack of quorum was quite prevalent. And should Guam EPA need to enforce something immediately and without a quorum, it might be very difficult to enforce. So in thinking about maybe a compromise of that, that's why I put in more of the reporting requirements, not only to the board but also the ELOs, the TUR, and GUAN. So that was the thought behind that.
Thank you. I just think, Madam Speaker, I mean, I don't think that the lack of engagement by board members, I mean, then you renominate and replace board members. I don't think that should be a reason to reduce any level of transparency. But I did ask the author if she knew by any chance what the, on average, cumulative amounts of funds were in these respective accounts for these different programs? Do you know what, on average, are we talking about a few thousand? Are we talking about 50,000, 100,000? Do we know?
So I noticed in the budget, basically, the whole budget comes from these special funds. And so the cumulative amount, I believe the last budget that we passed is a sum of all of these funds, and if I recall correctly, it's around $800,000.
About 800,000.
For all of the funds in cumulative. So, yeah, it's not all funds are alike, so I would have to go back and look at the report, the CRIR, to see what is tracking.
Thank you very much. Madam Speaker, I just am of the position again, having been at Guam EPA, I just don't think of the issue as quorum with the board. I mean, the board at the beginning of the fiscal year, as we do for the government of Guam, can authorize a budget, can specify certain accounts or use for specific purposes. Then certainly, if something arises, the administrator can proceed respectively with what they need to do. But I think doing the process kind of backwards of having the administrator expend the funds and then report it back to the board is a very backward process. And I just think, again, I mean, 800,000 collectively is an awful lot of money. And that's something that unless we abolish the board of Guam EPA and don't give them those governing authorities to set policy and oversee the budget of Guam EPA, if we're going to keep them there, I think they should continue as all boards and commissions have with regards to overseeing these operations. And essentially, they have the role we do to determine the use of that budget. I'm sure the expenditure should be respectively in line with what the purpose is of those funds and why they were collected. But again, I think we should ensure that level of accountability, and I would probably offer to amend it, to return it back, because the board doesn't have to approve every single expenditure out of the fund, but they could simply outline in the budget. The administrator can propose that, you know, that year, this is what the intended uses are, and they can be very specific about what that is. And then automatically, the administrator can proceed, how he or she may determine the need is in the course of the year. They don't have to go to the board every single time. But I think we need to be more responsible with how we spend public funds. The administrator of Guam EPA does not come to the legislature for confirmation. The board members do. So that's where the public process of accountability exists with the board. And I would rather have that happen during a duly noted public meeting to where we know how these funds are intended to be spent, and then the board grants that authority to the administrator rather than the administrator spending the funds and then after the fact, making that report back to the board. So I'm going to offer that amendment. I have to work with legal. I don't know, Madam Speaker, if there are other members that want to comment on this so I don't hold up any other discussion with regards to this bill, but I want to make that amendment because I think things should work in proper order. I don't think this should be an exception in our government to how funds are expended.
You're asking for a recess to make an amendment?
Well, that's my proposal. I want to amend it. I don't agree with this process after the fact of the administrator reporting to the board. I think the board should approve the budget for the year for EPA as the process is. It's a very public process rather than giving administrator oversight over $800,000 and reporting after the fact to the public how those funds are spent. It does have a board. I mean, they have a board. The board should carry out their respective duties overseeing the budget for the agency.
Yes. My concern is that we've taken long recesses for these amendments already, and so I'm asking all senators that the amendments be prepared in advance if we can...
Madam Speaker, this is a deliberative body. I have not, this is the first time I've gotten up to speak on this bill.
I agree, and that's why we have taken many recesses.
I cannot be impacted by other members because they choose to make amendments.
Senator Brown. Senator Brown.
Madam Speaker!
We will proceed, if there is no objection, and to coming back to you when your amendment is ready.
I just said that.
If, I am deliberate, we are going to proceed and...
I can't be impacted by the actions of other members of the body. I just told you, if there's others that choose to speak, I will go make the amendment.
Senator Brown, we've heard your request, and I'm trying to entertain that now.
Well, Madam Speaker, perhaps you need to be a little more mindful rather than simply ruling members out of order.
Senator Brown, if you will allow me, we will entertain your request with the body, but we need to entertain that. So if you would allow us, is there any objection to coming back to Senator after she's prepared her amendment as we proceed? That's not the motion. On the motion, is there any objection? There being no objection, that motion carries. We will come back to Senator Brown after the other speakers. Is there any other speaker on Bill 162-36? On Bill 162? Senator Son Augustin, we can, we are coming back to you now after your request to come back to you later, and we are now resuming that. So we are back with Senator Son Augustin.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My colleagues, you'll find it, it's under SB 162, JSSA, line 11, page 2. I have a total of eight amendments, but they're actually two small ones per section. We'll start with line 11, page 2, to amend the bill to read, "Striking out non-lapsing." Basically, what it's doing is just creating the revolving fund within the EPA. That's all it's doing. Because when you say non-lapsing, just take the definition and we can move from there. Striking out the word "non-lapsing," creating the revolving fund within EPA. Then within the same section there, if you like, I can move to page 3, which is still within the section of air pollution.
Well, um...
Ma'am?
Sorry. Are you talking about the First Amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Page 2, is that correct?
That's correct. Line 11.
It doesn't reflect the bill on page 2. Line 11.
Oh, that's correction, that should have been line 17.
Line 17 off page 3, right?
I'm mixed up, totally. It dates, line 3, page 3, line 17. Correct, 11 to 17, the page to 3. Air pollution.
All right. Okay, we're talking now about...
Is this striking out non-lapsing?
Yes.
Just striking that out, that's all.
All right, just one second for the clerks to make sure we've got the correct. We're going to, so now, the amendment says line 11, page 2, but the author is amending that to be line 17, page 3.
That's correct, ma'am.
Line 17, page 3, it says, "Air Pollution Control Special Fund." All right, everybody see that one? Okay, if so, the author may, do you have anything more to say on the amendment?
No, nothing else.
Okay, so on the amendment, Senator Tai Tui, you are recognized.
Situus massum, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I have a question to the author, main author of the legislation. It's obvious that this bill was actually given to legal to review and help craft the legislation. So there's got to be a reason why that verbiage was put in place. If legal says that it's not needed or it was needed to clarify, to be specific, to ensure that the intent of that line is met, then that's the reason why it was put in. So I'd like to know with the author, though I know she's busy talking right now, but I'd like to find out why that particular language was put in.
Would the author yield to the question by the Senator on the floor?
Would she kindly repeat the question?
Would you please repeat the question? Absolutely. There is an amendment to the legislation, and the amendment in that section that's being amended is to take out non-lapsing. And that's on page 3, line 17, on the non-lapsing. And I know that this bill has gone through legal review and markup as well. So my question is, why was non-lapsing placed in this section? Is it something that legal, you know, recommends to put in, to be specific, so that whatever the intent of the legislation is clear and precise? So the question is, non-lapsing, why was that put in in the first place?
I yield to the question. So yes, another fund, so if you look at the original statute, it already had that language in there. So if you look at the pesticide management fund, it states, "Non-lapsing revolving fund." So what this bill was doing, it was synchronizing all the changes to include that. I know that the non-lapsing part is, the idea is that all the funds that were in there are not going to lapse and stay within that fund. So that was, I guess, the reasoning behind putting in that language for Section 2 of the bill, the Air Pollution Control Special Fund, and the other parts, other funds that did not have that language of non-lapsing. But I believe there are other funds that contain that language, and not just Guam EPA, but other, potentially other funds. So I think, yeah, I think the debate here is, you know, the proper verbiage and what to put in, whether to stick what was previously used or to, you know, modify that. But that's the idea. The idea is really just continuing appropriations and non-lapsing, in addition to continuously appropriated in combination of those two elements, would create a situation where it is continuing appropriations. So that was the point behind that.
Thank you, and thank you to the author of this legislation for the explanation. If you look back to this, that section that's in question on the Water Research Development Fund 2, and that's current language in the Guam Code annotated, which they use that same language, non-lapsing, as well in this language. Now, if this language has been in the books for all this time and it's intent, then I don't see why we can't continue to put this on unless legal can tell us that taking out this particular section is not going to fulfill the intent of this bill. If taking out this section is not going to be able to fulfill the intent of this legislation, then, I don't see a reason why not to put it in, but it's language that's already currently in law.
Yeah, I do.
So if you give me one second, I'd like to ask legal to make sure that if you take this language out, it's not going to change.
We're going to proceed. We've had a long recess for this exact question, this earlier today.
And Madam Speaker, then if this was a question asked, then what was the answer? If this question was asked, what was the answer then? You said that it was already spoke about earlier, so what was the answer? From legal.
You may discuss it with legal.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Is there, yeah, is there anyone else who would like to speak on the Bill 162? I mean, I'm sorry, on the amendment, line 17, page 3. On the amendment, anyone else? Senator Perez, on the amendment.
Yeah, I had a chance to, during recess, to talk to both OFB and legal counsel. I'm right now in communication with Guam EPA, and they would like some time to review these amendments. There's like eight amendments in total. And so I would like to make the motion to suspend discussion until they have, they've conducted their review of all the amendments and provide their feedback on this.
On the motion to suspend discussion on this bill, is it to a specific time or...
No, because until they're complete, their review is complete.
All right. On the motion to suspend discussion on the bill while EPA reviews the seven or eight amendments, is there any objection to that motion? You're objecting to the motion to suspend discussion? That's, that's what, that's what we're doing, setting it aside. Is there any, there's an objection to the motion. All in favor of setting the bill aside, raise your hand. We're still on the amendment, on line 17, page 3. Senator Perez, you have the floor.
Point of inquiry, Madam Speaker, the question on the floor was the author of this legislation asked to set aside the bill, and there was an objection to it. I just wanted to clear that for that for the record.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Senator Perez, you have the floor.
Point of information, Madam Speaker.
State your point of information, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The sponsor of the bill did not ask specifically to set aside, they said to suspend discussion. So there's a difference between the two, I would think.
Senator Perez, you have the floor.
Then I would like to rephrase my motion, or like to set aside this bill to allow for EPA to review the eight or so, possibly more amendments.
On the motion to set aside the bill, is there any objection? No objection, motion carries. We're now on Bill 70-36 COR. Senator Blas, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, referring to, legal counsel had just given me her, basically, her study right up on us. Motion to set aside.
On the motion to set aside Bill 70-36, is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Shelton, Majority Leader, you are recognized. We're on Bill 111, Senator Shelton's bill, Bill 111.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to make a motion that we set aside this bill.
On the motion to set aside Bill 111-36 COR, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We are now on Bill 184-36 COR. Senator Son Augustin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Bill number 184-36 COR, amended by the committee, is an act to authorize the military order of the Purple Heart, Guam Chapter 1315, to use a portion of the Skinner Plaza to establish the Guam Pacific Island Gold Star Families Monument, honoring Guam's Gold Star service families, whose son or daughter made the ultimate sacrifice in service of our island and our country. I'd like to recognize my co-sponsors for the bill. We have Senator Amanda Shelton, Senator Talina Cruz Nelson, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Senator Clint Rigel, Senator Jose Pito Trelle, Senator Tony Adda, Senator Frank Blas Jr., Senator James Mullen, Senator Chris Duñez. And during the public hearing, Madam Speaker, you've addressed your support, and so did Senator Brown and Senator Talia Tai Tui. This legislation was introduced at the request of the Gold Star Family Memorial Planning Team and the Guam Chapter of the Military Order of the Purple Heart. As many as you, as many of you know, Guam's enlistment in the United States are unfortunately one of the highest per capita, if not the highest. And we have seen thousands of our sons and daughters leave their families behind to go off and serve our country in many foreign and domestic conflicts. Unfortunately, some did not make it home alive. They came home to grieving family who supported them and at that time had to lay them to rest. These individuals, spouses, children, and parents are given the distinction of being Gold Star family in honor of their sons or daughters paying the ultimate sacrifice. The Gold Star Family Memorial will be erected to honor these families. With the help of the Woody Williams Foundation and generous support of donors, the memorial will stand as a beacon of hope and peace for our island. Woody Williams is a 98-year-old World War II survivor who stormed our shores in Assen during the liberation of Guam. His foundation was established to honor... liberation of Guam. His foundation was established to honor Gold Star Families and has graciously honored Guam and the Pacific with the first Gold Star Family Memorial in any U.S. territory. He's also, if I'm correct, a Medal of Honor recipient. I want to thank my colleagues who signed on as co-sponsors. I look forward to additional co-sponsors, like I've mentioned, the three of my colleagues. And together, we can continue to honor the sacrifices of our island's sons and daughters who bravely and courageously fought for our freedom that we experience today. I hope that our vote on Bill 184 be a resounding yes in support of these families who lost their loved ones in the battle. My colleagues, this Thursday at 1:30, will be a site dedication at the Skinner Plaza. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, Senator, I'm sorry, on the Bill 184-36, is there anyone who'd like to be recognized on the bill? Senator Adda, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I stand in full support of this piece of legislation. And I thank the author of the legislation for including us as co-sponsors. Madam Speaker, this project should have been done, actually, a year and a half ago. And the original location, I believe, was going to be down at Adalou. And I could not think of a more appropriate place for this monument to be than right here in the heart of our city, of our island, Hagatna. The delay in building this project is perhaps several factors that were involved, location, funding. And the Williams Foundation came out in full support of this project for our people, for our island. And I think this is going to be one of those many projects that we're going to be very, very proud to have on our island, a memorial that is dedicated to those who have given the ultimate sacrifice in defense of our country and our island. I asked my colleagues to please support this legislation so that we can get this project moving. It was said during the public testimony that two mothers have passed away from those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. And I think we need to move faster so that we'll be able to let this be realized by the rest of the families that are still here, so that they'll be able to see the project to finalization. It's never easy when we want to build something or have something dedicated to different organizations, or even to different areas, have it built in different areas of our island. But being right next to the Purple Heart Memorial, across the way in the Plaza de España is the Guam Militia Memorial. All these represent those who have given that, given of themselves in protection of freedom and democracy. And I hope that my co-sponsors and my colleagues come out in full support of this. And let's finally get this built and dedicated to those who have given that ultimate sacrifice, their lives for the protection of freedom and democracy. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On Bill 184-36, Senator Brown, then Senator Duñez. Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I certainly rise in support of Bill 184 and thank the author, Senator San Augustin, for introducing this legislation. Certainly for all of us, one way or the other, have been affected by the loss of a loved one that's died in action. And I'll try and keep it together, because talking about these issues are always very emotional for me. And I know for families that have lost loved ones, you know, when your loved one goes off to war, you always have the hope and pray that they're going to come back. That you're going to be able to see them again and talk to them, and life continues. But when it doesn't, and when you lose a member of your family, especially when we're talking about our soldiers, in every case, you're talking about someone who dies very young in life. Being a Gold Star Family, I'll tell you, is a distinction that no family wants. If we could only exchange it to have that loved one back with us. But we also know it's important to recognize their choices that they made to serve, knowing full well the consequences may ultimately mean their lives. It's always hard for those of us that are left behind, the families that lose loved ones in action. It's always very sudden, and it's very shocking, and it's life-changing. And the hole in your heart that it leaves is with you forever. It's important that we recognize those losses and those sacrifices, and it's lessons for our young people growing up today. It's unfortunate that we still have to go through this, that we still have conflicts in the world that we're engaged in, that we have to send our men and women to the field of battle. Sometimes the battle is at home, because these losses are always with you. Our family had the distinction of losing my godfather. He was 21 years old, sergeant in the Army. He's one of the last Tramoral Sons killed in action in Vietnam. He was killed one day before his 22nd birthday. And every time you hear about a family that loses a loved one in action, every time you see their remains brought back, we all recognize, we all connect, we all feel a sense of loss. Death is an inevitable part of life, but of course, when we see young people lose their lives, it's always hard to rationalize that. You know, we're supposed to get up and go on and continue, of course, as is our responsibility for those of us that are still here, but it changes you. And I know for many families, this monument, while people look at monuments as concrete, you know, those monuments are places to go, to contemplate, to pray, to remember, to share, especially with a grief that it's very hard to, it's very hard to console. It's very hard to console this type of loss that lives with you. I mean, my godfather was killed in action 49 years ago. I still live with that. This is my youngest memory as a child of ever losing someone close to me, of ever having the concept of what death is. And I know there are many families, many mothers and fathers and brothers and sisters and children that live with this. So while we pass many pieces of legislation, I think today, in our deliberations, probably one that will not have as much impact as this particular bill, because of what it represents, what it represents to so many families on Guam that have lost so much. And I certainly want to thank all the efforts of everyone that's been involved in working so hard to have this monument put together, of what it represents to them, and certainly what it represents to all those who have had suffered such a tremendous loss. With that, Madam Speaker, I rise in support of this bill. And again, I thank the sponsor for his initiative to put this legislation in place. Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment on this bill.
Thank you, Senator. On Bill 184-36, is there anyone, oh, Senator Duñez, you're
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, I want to say this. It's an honor to stand, to support, to be in full support of 184-36, to honor Gold Star Families by the construction of the monument to happen here soon. You know, Madam Speaker, there was such emotional and eloquent testimony during the public hearing on this. And while I'd like to recognize every individual that testified, of course, Tim Ono stands out simply because of his perseverance and taking the helm of ensuring that this would get done. I was moved by the video that was shown, monuments across our great nation that have been constructed like the ones that we will be constructing. It was very, very moving to see Mr. Williams and our veteran. And one of the most moving, you know, statements that was made during that video presentation and showing the beauty and the splendor of the recognition was, he said, "You know, people call me a hero, but I don't consider myself a hero. Heroes are those who paid the ultimate sacrifice." There's so much meaning in doing something like this. You know, Madam Speaker, as we've been detached now from Liberation Day because of the issues surrounding COVID, for some reason, that day I had a number of chores that took me at least a couple times past Skinner Plaza on Marine Corps Drive. And I couldn't help but notice the veterans who still gathered around the Purple Heart Memorial. You know, they just, you could see, sit them in their chairs, they just put out their chairs, they made sure it was clean. I'm sure they had done that days before as well. But every time I passed there, there was a new group. People came and left, came and left. It's just amazing, you know, to me, how so profound it is to an individual who serves our nation, who, as the retiring speaker mentioned, who willingly goes out to defend our freedoms, knowing that the possibility exists of an outcome, you know, that would be the loss of their lives, you know, their final demise, if you will, the potential exists. So this is such an honorable thing to do. Madam Speaker, in closing, I didn't realize, and I'm so glad that the sponsors, Senators San Augustin, had asked me to be a co-sponsor. I had so many phone calls and messages from friends. I didn't realize how much frustration kind of that currently exists, that there's been, you know, a lot of planning behind this. And those veterans want finality. They want this done. And so I'm glad, I'm not placing any blame, I'm just simply glad, I'm celebrating that we are here at this point in time. And I believe that this bill will get unanimous support, and it's something that we can be very proud of as the site gets dedicated soon, and as we all pull whatever efforts we need together to get this done. It's such an honorable and dignified thing to do. So with that, Madam Speaker, Sisus Massey, for the opportunity to share a few thoughts on this. And I'm sure when the news goes out that this bill has passed, veterans across our beautiful island, within the region, and all over will celebrate the soon-to-be constructed monument. And I'm sure they will put every effort themselves to make sure, no matter what it takes, it will get done. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On Bill 184-36, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized? Senator Blas, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I too rise in support of Bill 184-36. I felt compelled, and I feel remiss, to share with my colleagues and to share with the listening audience, that the same day that the good senator, the good author from Jigul, was circulating the bill for co-sponsorship, that you just missed it by about two minutes. But it also shows, Madam Speaker, that, you know, once this body had received a request, because as was mentioned earlier by Senator Adda, that there's a history to, you know, the construction or the development of this monument here, that actually, it started at Assan Beach Park, then it moved to Adalou. And then it was actually, as a result of conversations, that the Lieutenant Governor actually reached out and said, "Maybe we can get with the legislature so that we can move, because it's probably one of the more appropriate areas." And so I thought that it was necessary, that to be able to show that in support of this project. And I appreciate and I thank the author for the inclusion of many, almost all the senators on this floor as sponsors, that there was a lack of a term, a multi, a multi-attack plan, two different bills, minutes apart. And I felt that it was, it's only fitting, Madam Speaker, that you recognize for that, for that attempt too as well. And I'm glad that the author has also concluded you as part of the sponsors to this legislation. I thought that was necessary, so that we can provide the historical piece on that, on that night that that bill was getting its sponsorship. So thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Blas. On the bill? On the bill. There are no other speakers on the bill. Then Senator San Augustin, you may close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to only add, you, Madam Speaker, Senator Brown, Senator Telo, but I'd actually believe that all my colleagues would co-sponsor this bill. Unless there's an objection, I'd like to add also Senator Perez and Senator Torres onto the bill, because as a matter of fact, Senator Torres' father was the first governor to go to Vietnam. So I have to give her credit for that.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Madam Speaker, then I'd like to just send this to the voting file, so we can vote on this as fast as possible. Thank you. And a reminder to my colleagues, Thursday at 1:30, the governor's office is hosting the site dedication of the Skinner Plaza. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion to place a bill in the third reading files, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We are now on Bill 106-36COR. Senator Moilen, you are recognized.
Point of information, Madam Speaker.
You state your point of information.
I believe, Madam Speaker, we said that we would wait the five-day rule, you know, to allow the notification of a bill that has not been warranted on the agenda, to allow it for five days, and that's not until Friday.
Is that a motion?
It's a motion to, yes, because I believe that was...
A motion, sorry. Is there a motion?
To set aside until Friday, to allow the public the five-day notice of a bill that was not placed on agenda, of the session agenda.
On the motion, is there any objection?
Objection, Madam Speaker.
There's an objection. All in favor, please raise your hand. It's to set aside the bill until Friday. I'm sorry, please raise your hands again for the clerk, all in favor of the motion. Motion fails. Senator Moilen, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, colleagues. Bill 106-36COR, as amended by the Committee on Public Safety, Emergency Response, Military and Veterans Affairs, Mayor's Council, and Public Transit, introduced by myself, Senator Joe San Augustin, Senator Peter Trelle, Senator Frank Blas Jr. All co-sponsors are also former police officers. And I myself introduced this bill with knowledge of being a former parole officer at Department of Corrections. of Corrections. But this is an act to add subsection 601-091-III to chapter 60, title 10, quote, annotated, relative to including police precincts to the list of exceptions where authorized individuals shall not openly carry a firearm or carry a concealed weapon. This amended version, Madam Speaker, is different from as introduced to COR. The amended version basically strikes out what was originally introduced regarding this being effective for other government agencies. So that is completely removed in the amended version. The substitute version just talks about what happens at GPD, and it adds GPD to the list of exceptions where an authorized individual shall not openly carry a firearm or carry a concealed firearm. The government facilities that are presently don't allow firearms in the facility are the Guam Congress Building, our building, Superior Court of Guam, Guam Department of Education Schools, Department of Corrections, and Department of Youth Affairs. So the Guam Police Department has recommended adding GPD and the offices under their control at GPD because presently, one can basically walk into the police station with a firearm, which is a concern with GPD. So the act does not take away the right of anyone to bear arms, rather it prevents the carrying of a firearm into the police station. Same restrictions that we have at Judiciary of Guam, the Congress Building, Department of Corrections as well. The individual may just has to simply secure the weapon in the vehicle prior to entering GPD if this measure passes. So, Madam Speaker, we had some good testimony from GPD officers. Again, this is brought to our attention in our office to move this measure forward, and appreciate the discussion, looking forward to moving this measure forward. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. On the bill 106-36, as amended by the committee. Senator Blas, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I do rise in support of the legislation, and I do thank the author for the opportunity to be able to co-sponsor this. However, in reading the language, I just wanted to make sure that the language is not restrictive enough that it does allow individuals who are authorized to carry. Certainly, you don't want a police officer not authorized to carry a weapon into the police department. So I just want to make sure, and I recognize this is already in law. However, you know, there could be arguments that we made as to why it's already illegal to carry certain firearms in certain places. But I just want to make sure that this legislation doesn't, as a consequence, restrict police officers from also carrying the firearm. And then I guess I can yield to the author on that concern.
Would the author yield to the question?
Yes, yes. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, colleague. The idea is not that the employees of the Guam Police Department are not able to bring in their weapons. They're authorized to handle the weapons. The intent of this bill is addressed to folks that are coming in to make a complaint. And that's how this was presented to us and also explained during the public hearing. Police officers had a situation where somebody was making a complaint, and they can openly see the weapon that this person brought in to file a complaint. The person was asked to remove the weapon and place it back in their vehicle, and they basically were, they were confronted by that person to say, by what law shall I have the authority? Do we have the authority to do so? So again, in the performance of your duty as a police officer, you're authorized to carry your weapon into their headquarters, authorized to drive with your weapon, and you know, most likely take it home too, I'm sure, if you secure it properly. But in the bill, clearly, the intent of it is regarding a civilian coming in to file a complaint, or somebody that's off-duty filing a complaint as well. So I hope that answers the question. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Blas.
Madam Speaker, let me just go ahead and, for the purposes of being able to move things along, I'm going to just go ahead and look at this a little bit more just to make sure. And I may have some unlimit to propose to ensure that that is in fact the case. Thank you very much.
All right. Is there any objection to allowing us to come back to Senator Blas? No objection, motion carries. Senator Tlahey, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I had conferred with the author of the bill regarding my intent to, you know, Madam Speaker, I really don't want to be restricted to carry my own weapon in my office. Survey reveals that if there is an active shooting anywhere, any place within a building, every two seconds, somebody's going to die. And I want to be able to protect myself, to protect my employees in my office. And I even asked the author of the bill, is that thing included? As long as you go before the training for a concealed weapon and the use of a weapon, I would like to be allowed to carry my own concealed weapon in my office. And I don't see anything on this bill that reflects my desire to carry my own weapon concealed in my office. I am trained to carry concealed weapon, and I'm just asking the author if that was included. And the indication was that it was included, and I don't see anything on that bill right
Would you like the author to yield to your question, Senator?
Yes, I would like the author to kind of just pinpoint anywhere in the bill that allows me to carry concealed weapon in my office like I have requested in the beginning.
Senator Moylan, would you yield to the question?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yes, I would yield. And thank you, colleague, for the question. The Senator was very thorough in his explanation of wishing to carry in many offices too. And there was other testimonies during the public hearing where other government agencies, other government offices also wanted the right to maintain the right to bear arms. If I understand the question correctly, that we should pinpoint in there to allow that to happen. I think, which is understood, but the fact that we are not excluding, for us, senators who have offices that are outside our Congress Building, it's no exclusion for, not only for the senator's office, but also for other government agencies. We're not, this does not apply in that situation. So as a senator, if your office is in Senahania, right, then it's okay if that's, if that's your intent, licensed person, to carry your weapon in your car or in your office, that's pretty good. And I feel with the expertise of the senator who was offering the question, I wouldn't mind being his neighbor because I think I would feel well-protected. So I hope my colleague can understand this clearly, though it doesn't say in the bill that this applies to you, but what it's saying in the bill is that you're not listed as it applies to you and other government agencies as well. So therefore, you can truly carry your weapon if you so wish to your office for your own protection of an active shooter, especially in today's society. So I hope that offers my colleagues, answers my colleagues' questions. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator...
Madam Speaker, if I may, if we look at page three, number 16, where it says, "Any office space leased, rented, or owned by the government of Guam," it did not say anything here that authorizes me to carry my own concealed weapon in my office. So I would like that wording to be placed, that as long as you're trained and you have a concealed permit, as a senator, I am obligated to make sure that I protect the people in my office and myself. Like I said, if there's an active shooting, survey revealed that every two seconds, somebody's going to die. So I ask the author if we can include something like that to allow me, not only as a former police officer, but also licensed with a concealed permit and going before training for carrying a concealed weapon. I just want, I just want that to be quoted in this particular bill. And I had mentioned that I do support your bill, but I want to protect myself and my people, and I want to protect, you know, senators, if they want to really just get a concealed permit, just go through training and, you know, I don't know why we cannot carry a concealed permit if we're trained, because there's nobody to protect, there are people in there if you don't have a weapon in there. So I just ask the author to maybe put something down that would cover that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, is there anyone else who would like to be recognized on Bill 106? On the bill? If not, then the author may close. Sorry, Senator Titigui? On the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I have a concern with regards to the legislation, that it's only talking about a license. It's not talking about the handgun or the gun itself, you know, the firearm itself. If I'm not mistaken, that this law only applies to the licenses issued by 60109.1 of 10 Guam Code Annuity. They do not apply to those licensed under 60109 or 60105, non-concealed, or those who have, or those who don't have a license at all. This bill applies only to the select few licensees who have been trained in firearm safety and have been vetted through the FBI, GPD, and Superior Court background. So I have a question to the author of the legislation.
State your question.
So my question is, does this only pertain to the licenses issued by 60109.1 of 10 GCA, or does this not apply to the license, licensed under 60109, or non-concealed, or those who don't have a license at all?
Would the author yield to the question?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yes, as best I can. If the question is, is somebody's bringing a registered licensed weapon into GPD, yes, it applies. If the question is asking me, what if it's not a registered weapon? What if it's an illegal gun? Oh, well, it's a violation of the law as well. So the idea is, unless you're going to register your weapon when you come into GPD, which is mentioned in the bill as well, then you can bring it in if you're going to have your weapon registered. Whether it be a licensed concealed, and you weren't carrying it as concealed, whether it be a license as a, you can bear it on your sidearm like a six-shooter, like the Wild Wild West, you know, up to you. Now, if you're going to bring an illegal weapon into GPD, well, that's the best place to try to get away with it because you're going to be busted. So either way, Madam Speaker, the idea of the bill is don't bring in the firearm unless you're going to have it registered. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Titigui, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I think the best deal is to make sure that this bill passes with the true intent and not confuse anybody with regards to how this bill is to be laid down, whether it's a licensee or a non-concealed firearm. So there are some issues too during the public hearing that I heard and some people coming to me with this issue, and that's why I'm bringing it up to the forefront so that, to try and clarify exactly in this section of 6019.1, and how it does not apply to those licensed under that particular chapter or section, or section 60105, non-concealed. So it's very confusing at this point. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Senator, on the bill, is there anyone else who would like to be recognized on the bill? Senator Dwyane?
Soodzooz Masi, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of Bill 106-36, and while I can understand concerns brought up, I just went through the bill again as amended. I know the concerns before were other government offices and the like. But as I read some of the concerns that have been brought up, it's very clear that it is underlined as a firearm, which is the amendment, as well as a handgun, and it is the weapon itself concealed or otherwise open that would not be allowed. It also, one of the concerns that was brought up, is the issue of locations. It's very clear in the bill, as it's written, that it's the properties rented, leased, or otherwise utilized by the Guam Police Department. It does not include any other buildings, or any other offices, or any other spaces. So therefore, it would be understood that those spaces are not the spaces that are being exempted. I know there was concerns, once again, and that's why the bill was amended, that there were other government, and you can see the strike-throughs on the bill, other government offices to be indicated. But in my speaking to the chief of police and other officers, it's very clear that they do have a concern with regard to the precincts and other offices because of the nature of their work. They're concerned concealed or otherwise individuals that would do any business with the police, whether it be a complaint or any other reason to be in the office, for them to have in particular concealed or any weapon. As you know, Madam Speaker, even officers in the, in the conduction of their duties, whether it be having to serve warrants, or going to homes for complaints, or pullovers or the like, I mean, the first alert that is going to get a lot of attention at any time is either any indication of a weapon, well, visible, or any indication of a movement or some activity that would look and be construed as moving towards a weapon. That's just their training. That's what it comes down to. And so I think it's important for the safety of the officers, but even the safety of the public, to ensure that, you know, that these particular locations that can be, you know, there are spaces that are occupied by officers who are armed for the very reason why officers are armed in the conduction of their duties. But you can see, once again, why a concealed or otherwise conspicuous weapon would be a very, very tenuous and dangerous situation in a police precinct or any other areas where they're conducting business. So for that reason, at least for me, it's clear the way the statute reads that it is about the weapon. It is the licensure, of course, because a licensed weapon, and I think the author indicated correctly that any non-licensed weapon even of itself is already a crime, and that individual, anybody who would carry a... and that individual, anybody who would carry a non-registered weapon into a police precinct or any other location is clearly not operating under the confines of the law. So for that reason, Madam Speaker, I think it's a pretty straightforward bill, and I do support it. Sisus Mosi.
Sisus Mosi, Senator. On Bill 106-36, is there any other senator who would like to be recognized? On the bill? On the bill? If not, then the sponsor may close on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have, we can dispense of closing remarks. Appreciate my colleague's support. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion to place Bill Number 106-36 on the third reading file? Oh, my apologies. Are you, did you want to? I called for it. Senator Blas, you are recognized on the bill. No, you're recognized on the bill, Senator. All right, then on the motion to place the Bill 106-36-COR on the third reading file, is there any objection? There's an objection, so all in favor of placing Bill 106-36 on the third reading file, please raise your hand. Motion fails. We are now on Bill Unless any of the bills that have been set aside would like to proceed, these bills that remain on our agenda are all for Committee of the Whole, so, yes. Senator, Majority Leader Nelson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make a motion that we recess till tomorrow at 10:00 a.m.
All right. If we could clarify, which bill, would any of the, if any of the set-aside bills will proceed tomorrow, otherwise we need to call the Committee of the Whole people in?
I would recommend that we do Bill Number 111 in the morning, and then Committee of the Whole after.
All right. So we will give opportunity for all set-aside bills to be, to proceed in the morning, and then we'll do the Committee of the Whole bills, which include Bill 130121153 together while we have the Committee of the Whole people here in the afternoon. Is there any objection to that motion? Seeing no objection, I'm sorry, Majority Leader, what time was it that you said?
10:00 a.m., Madam Speaker.
All right. Is there any objection to that motion? Seeing no objection, we are recessed until 10:00 a.m. tomorrow morning.